...or other tragedies that we know will hit this city sometime in the future. We don't know when, we don't know what, but we will need every assistance speaker to get our message out to the residents of the city of Toronto. It will also benefit MetroLink's. You know, all of us want to get people out of their cars and into transit. Well, this is one of the ways that you can make a contribution to that effort. Thirdly, Speaker, we are going to be hosting the Pan Am Games. This is a huge challenge that we're facing. We're all hoping that it's as successful as we anticipate it will be, but we need everything going for us. We need to be able to communicate to the residents of this city, the enthusiasm of the Games, the Games themselves, you know, how to get there, how to go to the various cultural events that will be presented along with those Games. Speaker, there is just so many benefits to a modern signage that I would hope that my colleagues would support these initiatives. The, you know, I have constituents, as many of us do, that travel to other cities around the world, and when they come back here, what they often tell us is how slow we seem to be in adapting to modern technology. Counselor Cho, I'm sure when he goes to Korea and takes a look at how they embrace technology in the emerging Asian cities, should be able to reinforce that position. So, Speaker, there's nothing wrong with these signs. There's a lot to be said for them, and I would hope on balance that you would see the benefits of supporting the recommendations from the Policy and Growth Management Committee.
Thank you. Could we ring the bells? the staff report, which is refusal. Sorry, Counselor Cole, yes, point of order?
Just on point of order, I placed my committee recommendation, I was told the committee recommendations were before us, and that goes first?
No, because Counselor Cole, when the report comes forward, the committee recommendation, you don't have to move, it's before us. So, any amendments that we have here goes before, okay? So, on Counselor Layton's motion, recorded vote.
The motion does not carry. The vote is 16 to 20.
Okay, our next motion is motion two by Counselor Aljamari. Recorded vote.
Counselor Pasternak.
Counselor Crisanti. Counselor Palacio, please.
The motion does not carry. It loses on a tie, 18 for each side.
Clauses, okay, on the item, recorded vote. This is on the item, the committee's recommendations.
Counselor Davis. Counselor Layton, please.
The item carries 22 to 14.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is on page two, EX 43.14. Counselor Davis, point of order?
I'd like to reopen to change my vote.
On page two, EX 43.14, Mayor Ford, you held the item down. It's on the Pan American Games capital projects. Do you have questions to staff?
Yes, she voted.
Mayor Ford?
No, I don't.
Okay, do we have any questions to staff? Counselor Davis has asked that we reopen that last vote. Counselor Davis has asked for, so can you please take your seats?
We've lost the vote.
No, not that one, the last vote. On the item. On the item.
2214.
2214. I don't know.
2214.
Okay, nobody's voting. Yeah, okay. Okay, we, well, what we're doing is taking a vote to see if we will allow Counselor Davis to reopen it.
Thank you, Speaker.
Deputy Mayor.
If people have left the chamber, and I'm not saying they have, but if they have, then you shouldn't, you shouldn't be, you can't take a revote because the same people that voted originally are not here.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, Counselor Davis is asking, so that's what we're voting on, if we're going to allow her to open it or not. So, we have to vote on that. This is a vote to, if we are allowing Counselor Davis to reopen it.
Yes, she did. Counselor Grimes, Counselor Maloney, Counselor McConnell, please.
It's in, Counsel, Deputy Mayor, it's in the rules.
Counselor DeBaer maker, thank you.
The motion to reopen does not carry. The vote is 22 to 14.
Okay, now let's go to our next item. Okay, Mayor Ford, you want to speak on the item?
Yes, I do.
Okay. We're on item, page two, EX 43.14. Okay, Mayor Ford?
Well, first of all, I want to start off by saying the Pan Am Games, I think, are going to be great for the city. I went to Guadalajara and I saw what it did down in Mexico. I was very, very dubious of this at the beginning, and they made some changes. But there's some exceptions to these changes, and these are one of the exceptions that I do not agree with. And it's, and it's making it very hard for the people that live around Centennial Park that I know very well. The local councillor at the time, Doug Holliday, was adamantly opposed to this. So was his constituents. And we're talking about a BMX track, a dirt track, that at the beginning of this project, they got an estimate, an estimate for a BMX track of $1.5 million. This is a dirt track that we might, we might be able to use maybe four to five months out of the year, weather permitting. It is not a dome track. This is just exactly the same as what you see at a high school track. It is a dirt track that is going to be used for the Pan Am Games. One and a half million dollars, I thought, was staggering for a dirt track, but now, now we find out this track is going to cost $4.4 million. And the first thing some people are going to say, well, that's not the city of Toronto's money, that's federal provincial. And friends, there's only one taxpayer. I've been saying it for 14 years. There's only one pocket. Federal, provincial, or municipal, four and a half million dollars for a dirt track at Centennial Park is not what the taxpayers want to spend their money on.
Everything's gone dead again.
Can you stop my time? My time's going.
Yeah, no, no, your time is, is stopped.
That clock's going.
No, I know, but it's stopped. Hold on. It's not, it doesn't work yet. We have to wait.
I only want a minute. I know I want a minute. It's good. It's not good? It's working now. It's good.
Is it working now? Okay, so now it's, okay, check your mic. Is it working?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, go ahead. Okay.
So, I don't know where I was, where we left off here. At the end of the day, at the end of the day, no one in their right mind would spend four and a half billion dollars on a dirt track, okay? The people don't want it, and I don't understand how you can be off by $3 million. Well, let's not get into waterfront. So, it puts...
Okay, hold on. Then, Councilman Wong, please stop interrupting.
I'm not interrupting.
No, please, please, stop it. Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
When we're, when we're fighting to keep taxes low, when we want to build subways, we want to deal with the gridlock, this is all about taxpayers' money. And at the end of the day, people vote with their pocketbooks. And I will not ever support spending four and a half million dollars for a BMX track at Centennial, or for that matter, anywhere in the city. Again, how can, how can you get an estimate for one and a half million dollars and then come in at 4.4, $3 million difference for a dirt track? If it rains, you can't use it. I, I'm completely missing out on this. You can get domed fields for a quarter of this price. We just had a big debate at Central Tech. I don't know who's building this track, but I'm pretty curious to find out where four and a half million dollars for a dirt track is going. They could, they completely ignored, completely ignored the constituents. I was getting a lot of calls from the people who live around Centennial Park. As of this day, my daughter and son play soccer at Centennial Park, and folks come up to me and say, why are they building this? Why can't we stop this? How are you going, how are you going to face the people? It's Pan Am, the local councillors tried to stop it at the time. Counselor Leon, the guy's the nicest guy you can meet. But, but I'm a little worried about how he votes sometimes. Um, he, and I don't believe, I don't believe that senior citizens ride BMXs on this track, which he said at executive. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor, but I don't buy that. And even if they did, even if kids ride around this, it's not worth four and a half million dollars, Madam Speaker. Four and a half million dollars is a lot of money for building a dirt track. And, and I don't know, there is absolutely no value for taxpayers' money. I'd rather resurface roads, fix bridges, build subways, keep taxes down. This money could help negotiate the next union deal, the best union deal we ever had. This money can go to help out the frontline workers if we have to, but we have no leverage when we're going out and spending four and a half million dollars. And you can break it down to the city portion, we're still $1.6 million. But at the end of the game, we can't go to the province and feds with our hand out and say, we need money. And this is the tip of the iceberg. Now, obviously, we have to support the Pan Am Games. I'm going to be the first to admit I never supported it before. But now, we've got it, we have to make the best of it, and that's exactly what I'm going to do. I'm glad they have made some changes. I'm glad they've tried to rein in some spending, but then, obviously, they haven't reined it in enough. And Madam Speaker, I would ask you guys to look at this and say, no, we're not spending four and a half million dollars. Send a message to the taxpayers saying we are looking out for their money, and send a message to Pan Am and say no, because I'll guarantee if we say no to this, they're going to have to find something else. And there's more than enough time to make the changes necessary. But spending four and a half million dollars on a dirt BMX track is absolutely a waste of taxpayers' money. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Shiner has a question for you. Well, actually, there was no motion.
That's fine, you can, I weren't happy to answer questions.
Actually, I'm having technical difficulties here. I keep punching your name, but nothing's lit up. And the mayor's name came off now, so. Okay, I can't get your mic on. Okay, there you go, okay.
Madam Speaker, actually, I just pressed all the buttons to try and get your attention on the point of order, wondering...
Oh, you have a point of order?
Whether we could actually ask questions of staff, because I, because we didn't ask any questions. Counselor Grimes, it is not up to you to decide what we do. It's up to council to decide. So, we didn't have a chance, and as I said to you when I approached your desk, I didn't hear that you said that. So, I'm asking if we could have an opportunity to ask staff questions.
Okay, okay, just a sec, just a sec.
I didn't hear it either.
Okay, I just, I can't get any, I can't get anybody's mics on here.
Just on a point of order, on a point of order, Madam Speaker, in order of procedure, you did not ask for questions of staff. You went directly to me as a speaker, and I think Counselor Shiner is absolutely right. He should be able to ask. I've said my speech, I don't have to speak again, but it's only right that questions should be asked of staff first, and you did not go to staff on this.
Okay, well, point of order, Mayor, I did ask. I did ask. I asked you and I asked anybody else. Nobody put their name up there, so I did ask. So, it's obvious that people are not listening because I did ask. And if you want to replay the tape, you can hear me ask. How many members of council heard me ask that question? Everybody did. So, you may have not heard it.
I'm not challenged.
And Counselor Shiner may not have heard it.
Not challenged.
But you know what? Let's ask questions of staff. Let's go and, we'll ask questions of staff. But I did say it, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So, Counselor Shiner, questions to staff?
If I could then.
Yes.
I note in the report, there's some change in grading and drainage and moving for toboggan hill. I'd really like to know where the extra budget is going to, because it's more than doubling the original budget for the track, and that seems a little bit out of place.
So, through the speaker, the BMX field was never part of the Pan Am envelope of projects that the city agreed to. It was not part of the original multi-party agreement. Toronto 2015 had a notional idea of putting a temporary track at Ontario Place, and subsequent to the city signing the agreement, they came to the city and they said, we'd like to build a permanent BMX facility, and we'd like to do it out at Centennial Park where we have the Olympium. And at that point, archery was also going to be at that site. It wasn't until the actual design was done for this permanent facility that we had a proper estimate. So, what I would say to you is the 1.5 was never, frankly, a proper estimate of the track. For sure, there are some costs associated with the location of it at this, at this part of the hill that adds extra drainage and so on, but frankly, even if they had put a permanent facility at Ontario Place with the same amenities, it would have been way more than 1.5 million dollars.
And in all due respect, every estimate has numbers in it for particular work, and I don't find acceptable the fact that you said, well, we put a guess up, because even a guesstimate...
We didn't put...
Sorry, can I finish my question? Even a guesstimate has estimates for the different amount of work, and there was a very extensive debate here at council about not having the BMX park at this location, and I was part of that. So, I want to know what the differences are from the original estimate to the current estimate, what it's costing.
Counselor, this was, the original estimate of 1.5 was not a city estimate, and we were not given any details about what they built that estimate on. I can certainly tell you what the costs of the components are in the 4.4 that has been tendered, but I cannot give you any numbers from the numbers that Toronto 2015 gave to the city when council considered this matter.
Can it be built for less by scaling back some of it? As, if I'm correct, the BMX park is a cross-country trail park for cyclists to ride on, as they have outside of the city. Am I correct that's what it is?
This, this has been built to meet the specifications of the BMX sport and Pan American Games requirements. We have value engineered it down to the level that we can get it value engineered to. It's a question of, to both to the city government and to the federal government, and the federal government has now agreed to pay their 56% share of the, of the majority of the cost of the BMX field. It was either do it or don't do it at all, and BMX is one of the required sports in the Pan American Games.
And if we don't put our share in?
Then the, then the city would be responsible for the BMX facility not being able to be available for Pan Am.
And the provincial share is?
The federal share is, so I want to explain something that didn't come out clearly enough at, at Executive Committee. So, when we initially built the, or wrote the report, we assumed that the federal government would pay its 56% of the entire 4.4 million. Just shortly before executive, they wrote to us and they said, we will pay our 56% share of the BMX facility, but we will not pay for the second ramp to be made of concrete. We will pay for that second ramp to be made of wood. The net impact of that is that the federal government will pay 56% of 3.96 million. We actually believe that a wooden ramp will create all kinds of operating difficulties. The value of that wooden ramp is $450,000. What we are, what the effect of Counselor Leon's motion at executive was, is that the city would pay its 44% share of the 3.96, which means the city pays 1.938 million for the base condition, and the city would cover the entire share of the concrete ramp, bringing our total contribution to 2.182 million. Our contribution is 1.5 million more than was originally budgeted.
Counselor, oh, Counselor Grimes, you had your name up. No questions? Okay, I'm going to close it off, okay? No more questions?
Sure.
Okay. Counselor Grimes to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think it's time we start embracing these games. You know, I just mentioned today in my announcement, we're one year out. As of this date today, this has been planned all the way along. Staff have got a good handle working with 2015. Originally, as our deputy city manager said, they were looking at clusters, and I got briefed on this many, many times, and the original place for BMX was at Ontario, at Ontario Place. They put the number down at 1.5. That was supposed to be a temporary facility that would be removed after the Games. After they started looking at further clustering, with all the other things happening at Centennial Park, we decided to take the BMX park out there. There's some concerns by Counselor Holliday at the time. We went up to further consultation, which this council knew about. It came back, and this council accepted that we're going to go to Centennial Park. So, to move the location now would be crazy, and then they went back and said, okay, this is what has to happen. We hired a consultant. They suggested that we move it around the ski field a little bit. The community didn't want that. Staff heard it loud and clear. We moved it backwards today. So, once we figured where it was going, it's going to be a permanent facility and all these changes, but this is going to be permanent and will stay as a legacy project for the kids up at Centennial and Counselor Leon's ward, my ward, all of Etobicoke and throughout the city. So, to start playing around this now, it's ridiculous. This council, you know, knew what was going on. T O 2015 is handling this, and we're working with our other partners, the federal government, the provincial government, and this is going to be absolutely fantastic. But it's time now to start embracing. This council made a decision over four years ago to embrace these Games. I was in Guadalajara as an observer for Toronto. It was fantastic what happened there. It's going to be fantastic what happens here, and I can tell you, I was down there with Kurt Harnett, and to see the excitement of the people's faces down in Guadalajara, that's what's going to happen here, and it's time we start embracing the Games. The money's being spent, so get over it. That's what we decided to do, this council, and the city's decided to host the Games. Let's embrace them. Time to move on.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I thank the mayor for saying what he said, because I think this has to be, given the circumstances, a very fair and open discussion. Yes, it is a dirt track, and yes, it will rain, and yes, perhaps the track will not be used. What I want to speak about is, the mayor indicated that many people have called him. I can assure my colleagues today, I have had one call for sure and one other perhaps message. That is the only communication I have received in my office. I want to assure council of one thing, and you've come to know how I operate and how I work since I came here in October. Had I have known there was more calls, had I have known there were people opposing this other than the two whom I have talked to, one of whom I've talked to, I would have made sure there was a meeting. I would have tried to find a way to collegially bring this together so that the mayor didn't have to take a lot of phone calls. I wasn't aware of that, so I proceeded in the best way I could. As to seniors with 55 and their butts, well, I'm, you know my age, I'm up there too. There are lots of young people... There are lots of young people, 49 and over, who will probably come and use this facility on a daring way or whatever. But it's a facility that's going to be there for the people. I have a picture of what the facilities are here. If anybody would like to see it, in your worship, let me pass it along to you to look at. I am concerned about the cost, as was staff. But we had no choice, as you've heard. 1.5 versus 4.5 million. What I addressed with the staff when I heard this was that the money was not coming out of city coffers. It was, I was assured, it was coming out of available funds that would not cost the city of Toronto any extra dollars. There are savings that have been affected by the Pan Am, and that was what they were using to make this happen. They took it one other step, folks. They took it from what was going to be a temporary facility at Ontario Place that nobody could use afterwards, and we've turned this into a project that is now going to be a world legacy project. There's only one other one like it, I understand, in Canada, and that is in Abbotsford, B.C. And this one will perhaps even supersede that. What will happen here is that we will be able to invite people and have people come into Centennial Park in Etobicoke to get the greatest amount of use out of this. When the project is finished, it will be able to be used 24/7 after the Pan Am Games. And while the Pan Am Games are on, people will have a chance to see what Etobicoke really is, and most importantly, our Centennial Park, and what it's all about. And as long as I'm in council, I want to make Centennial Park a place for the people. And with great respect to my counselor, Dusset, associate, I want to make it the High Park of Etobicoke and West Toronto. This item is required. We have no choice. We had to go with it, or I would suggest this council might be embarrassed by cancelling a Pan Am activity. And I don't think you want to see that, especially after what Counselor Grimes has just said. I want you to know that after the Pan Am Games are over, we are going to be looking for a sponsor, or we are going to be looking for somebody to take the Pan Am, to take this facility on and use it in the context that it will be used as a world-class facility. People are going to be able to use the five-meter run, as I mentioned, 24/7. There will be no charge for that. There will be berms up here in the hill that people can come and sit and watch and have facilities to enjoy, everybody enjoying themselves. I think this is going to be a real plus for Etobicoke. I think it's gonna be a real plus for Centennial Park, which is one of those little gems of our city that's not being utilized to the maximum. And we are gonna have a lot of things happening there for Centennial Park during the Pan Am Games that will put it out, I think, as a tourist attraction and as a world-class facility for people to come enjoy. I also want to address something else. I was assured by the staff, because I questioned it, that the matter of the Toboggan Hill was going to be preserved. The matters that came up in the council meeting that were discussed about the Meadowlands, they were being looked at. And in this cost is some monies to reallocate properties that would allow those Meadowlands to be disturbed in the least possible way. So that the creatures, if I could say it that way, in the Meadowlands will be disturbed in the least possible way. What is gonna happen here, I apologize over-
Thank you, Counsel Leon, your time is up. Counselor Shiner?
Madam Speaker, for those of you that don't know it, in the ward which I represent, we actually have a small, but very useful and well-used BMX park. It's hidden behind an arena. It was constructed a number of years ago when we were constructing the city's first skateboard park. I bring that to your attention because when we designed that, had a budget out for it and went out for bids, it came in over budget. So what we did is, we took it back, we made some modifications, and we brought it in at budget because we were dealing with taxpayers' money. And that's how we got the first skate park in the city built. And we got the BMX park built behind an arena, so that was there as well. And I know what the sport is about. As I used to accompany one of my sons on the trails. He could make it through, I fell down the cliff. I came out scarred and battered. He said, "What's the matter, Dad?" I mean, I always got lost. I thought, "I'm the one that's gonna have to get picked up." But I struggled on through, and I made it through the runs. And I can tell you, I've been to the top of Blue Mountain and see those hills from the top and gone all around on these cross-country trails and in different parts of the province as well. So I know what it is, and I know the need. Here's the problem. I take umbrage at the remarks of my colleague when he says, "Just get on with it. Just suck it up. Just go ahead." This is not our money to just go ahead with. This is not 10, 20, 30%. This isn't 100% more than the first cost. This is 300% more than it was estimated to be upon. And it was gonna be in this park, because that was the big debate that was here. It wasn't gonna be one time downtown. Counsel Holiday really took offense to it going into the park. He didn't want it there. And I disagreed with him because I thought it would be great. I would have loved to have it in mine. So to take a budget and triple it with money that's not yours, that's taxpayers' money, and when you just stand up here and say, "Just get on with it." "Oh, just embrace the situation." That's not what we're here for. We're here to be friskly responsible with the funds that we administer on behalf of the residents of the city of Toronto. And I haven't seen in any of this where they've gone back or any notes or any real detail as to where the cost is going, and was there any other way to make this for less? Or were there any sponsors we could bring in? Because that's an awful lot of money to add. So with all due respect, I don't think the report is complete enough. I don't think the work to reduce the cost was great enough. I think that the Games keeps going over budget, and although it's great to have the Games, that's an embarrassment to us. And I don't think we can just embrace this, embrace the situation and spend taxpayers' money. So I cannot support the recommendation to put this much more of our money or our city's money on behalf of the taxpayers of Toronto into this facility.
Thank you, Counselor Shiner. Counselor Dusset?
Thank you very much. If you build it, believe me, they will come. And the reason I say that is we are about to open Sunnyside Bike Skills Park. For four years, I have worked very, very hard to get teenagers, adults, out of our forests and out of our parks. They have been building bike jumps for 30 years in High Park. I closed that down in about my first six months as a councillor, and by golly, I got flack. But I said to residents, I said, "We will build something which will be far, far bigger and better than what you built in High Park." And we, as a city, have done that. I'm having trouble keeping them out of it right now before we officially open. We had a community build day the other week. We had people come, we had to cancel because of rain. Three days later, we gave them another date. Hoards, herds, people came and helped us build those jumps. They want a BMX bike ramps. They want this. It is in Pan Am Games. That's a very good reason for us to build it now, and it's a very good reason to keep it later. I had kids cycling from Bathurst and Eglington down to Lake Shore to help us build these jumps. Bathurst and Eglington, that's a long way away from Lake Shore and Alice, down by High Park. These adults and these kids are saying to us, "Please, build us somewhere where we can go legally, safely, and ride our bikes." I would rather see these kids and these adults on their bikes in these parks than sitting in front of a TV playing video games. We're always hearing that we need to get our kids out into fresh air. Get them exercise, keep them healthy. That'll keep our costs down on the Health Department. This is a great initiative. It's fantastic. It's a perfect location. You heard from Counselor Shiner, he has one in his ward. I have a brilliant park in my ward. Now we've got one in Etobicoke. Yes, it might have gone a bit more than we want, but if this is gonna be permanent, I hate to say it, it's the same as the umbrellas. You put your money in, we're gonna get years and years and years of benefit out of this. So thank you very much, and I look forward to maybe taking my Mary Poppins bike and trying it.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Madam Speaker, one second.
Well, I don't think the issue is, do we support the track, the BMX track? Absolutely, Counsel Dusset. But what the problem is, is that you're over budget by almost $3 million. That is what the question is today. Because we support the Pan Am Games, which we all do, it doesn't mean that we have to give direction to everyone, go over budget. We have millions of dollars that we're gonna spend, spend, spend. That is the problem with this issue. And yes, Counselor Grimes, yes, we have to move ahead with it. Does it mean that we have to spend millions of dollars over budget on, on projects where we don't have the money? And yes, okay, maybe it's not the city, city funds, it's provincial or federal. But when we have potholes that are six feet deep on Jane Street and throughout the ward, throughout the city, and we can't fill those potholes because we're spending $4 million on a track? How can you explain that to your taxpayers? I'm sorry, I can't do that. And yes, it's wonderful to have the bikes. It's wonderful to have it in High Park, in Etobicoke. The problem is that the budget, we're over budget by $3 million. And that's what the issue is, and that's what we should be concerned about. We can't say yes every time a report comes through council when they're over budget and say, "Oh, well, we supported the Pan Am Games, so we just have to support it." No, that's not what we're here to do. We're here to watch what we spend. And I do not support this, and I agree with the mayor. I agree with the mayor on this issue, that we just can't say yes every, every time we get a report at council because we think it's wonderful. We're gonna have bikes, we're gonna have seniors run on bicycles. I, Counsel Leon, I don't understand your logic. You know, we have to, it's the cost that concerns me, it's not the issue. I support the track, but it's the cost. That's what we should be concerned about. I think we'll come back with another report saying we want more umbrellas as well at this park. I mean, come on, wake up and smell the coffee.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Counselor Thompson, one, sorry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of council. There's no doubt that we're all very concerned with respect to the cost and the estimates and the numbers, what we initially thought was going to be $1.5 million is now considerably higher. And as I understand it as well, what was supposed to have been the $1.5 billion BMX track is not what actually is in place. It's a much more extensive, much more involved type of facility and so on. And we all get the fact that we would have preferred that the numbers that we had originally been, originally been told would have been the numbers that we would have been looking at and looking to approve here today. But what I do know is this, and we're all very aware and concerned in terms of how we can use our funds to, whether or not it's addressing potholes or any other series of things that we need monies for in the city. But what is actually evident to me is this, and Counsel Dusset speaks to it, about the utilization of these facilities by our young people. Young people in my ward have been looking to have, and I know Counsel Bearmakers Ward as well, asking for a BMX facility, and clearly not a $4 million park or anything. Because we know what happened when we built the skateboard park in my ward. Many of the young kids who were actually skateboarding on the street and not doing it safely, they're all now doing it at Elsmer and Warden in a very dramatic way. And I'm also very proud of a number of young females that are actually now doing that because they have actually a facility and a place to actually participate and to skateboard. There's no doubt that the public, when they hear this, they're not happy. I don't believe any of us here who are even saying we support this are happy with respect to the cost implication in that what we thought was going to be a million and a half is now in excess of that. Counsel Shiner has indicated it's now 300% more, and the speaker has addressed that. And clearly, if we have more funds, we can use them for other things and so on. But what is actually evident to me, and based on speaking with staff, and we've gone through this particular process, is that the envelope, the envelope for the Pan Am Games is not changing. As I understand it, the resources that are there for Pan Am is still the same. In Scarborough, for example, where we've actually built the aquatic facilities, we actually came in under budget of some $9 million. And that's a very good thing, very positive and so on. So as I understand, some of those funds that have been saved will be utilized as part of the total amount that's been assigned for the Pan Am Games. So therefore, while I don't necessarily support or think that it's okay that we have the cost overrun in terms of that one specific item, that's what we're talking about, the BMX park. But what we're actually seeing is that we have an envelope of money. There's still money left in the envelope. And while we're going to spend it, we're not doing it frivolously and saying, "Well, it's okay," in the sense that we are not concerned about how the cost estimates have been arrived at and the analysis and so on. We're concerned about, we're concerned about that on a daily basis. But the senior staff here at the city have been working to try to ensure that they manage within that envelope. And I think at this particular point in time, to simply say no in terms of moving forward, while we are concerned about the cost, it's not the appropriate course of action. We have to rally, we have to say this. The mayor is right in his explanation and is concerned because the mayor, as we know, is very frugal, and we all are in our sense of frugality. But the fact of the matter is that this is something that we invest in our city for our youth, the young people. I probably won't be one of those doing the BMX park. But there is a legacy development that will take place. Lot more of our young people will be participating in future Pan Am Games as a result of having a great facility, just like the aquatics facility in Scarborough and the Etobicoke Centennial Swimming Facility, how we've seen swimmers who've come through that. If we build the facilities in our city, they will obviously utilize it, and they will become not only community champions, but international champions. That's something that requires us to invest in. And I get the fact that this is something that we don't necessarily support. We don't want to see this happen on an ongoing basis, not, at no time at all. But at the end of the day, I think it's something that we have to support in the context that we actually have the resources that, because we've saved elsewhere, so we're using those savings. Not that we're happy about it, but we're utilizing it. So we're not bringing any new money in terms of what we had committed. We're not bringing any new money. It's the same money. And yes, it's important, and I understand that. Thank you, Speaker.
Last speaker is Deputy Mayor Kelly.
Thank you, Speaker. Speaker, there are, I think, three important tests of this recommendation that is before us this afternoon. The first is, how relevant is the, this sporting activity to the life of this city? Because, you know, I think we all know that there are sporting activities that are very esoteric. You can, you can spend a lot of money creating a forum for it, but once it's over, you know, outside of the elite athletes that participate in that sport, there's not much else. There's not much further involvement. But in this case, this type of bicycling is exploding amongst our ki, and our kids, not only our kids, but adults as well. So when these Games are over, this site is going to be well-used. And I appreciate Counsel Dusset's observations. She's a lot closer to this than I am, and I listened very closely to what she had to say. We will be in, you know, we govern on behalf of the future, Speaker. We don't govern for today. It's on behalf of the future. And this is something that will be built in anticipation of considerable future use. The second test, Speaker, is, will it be an imposition on the surrounding community? And it's been argued that it will be. Well, Counsel Leon, who joined us in the summer, has not only thrown himself into the life of City Hall down here, but into the life of the community that he represents. And he's kept his, his ears and eyes open and has reported back to us today that, that the, that there's been very little expression of opposition or, or concern with respect to this, this initiative, this bike BMX development in that particular park. So again, I appreciate, I've learned, I've listened very carefully to what he has to say. And the third test, and it's been raised by others, is a financial one. Hey, this is, this has gone considerably over budget. Now, if this and other expenditures were going over the total envelope for the Pan Am Games, that would be a legitimate concern. But as Counsel Thompson has indicated, and again, he's very close to this, and Counsel Grimes, the money will be moved internally inside the envelope. So in the end, there is no additional hardship on the taxpayer, whoever or whomever they may be. or whomever they may be collectively in the aggregate. So I think if you apply those three tests to this initiative, that I would hope that you would agree with me that it passes all three tests, and I would urge members of council to support this initiative from the executive committee.
Okay, so if we can ring the bells?
I mean, they weren't ringing all along.
Huh? Just, just on the item, yeah?
You and your highest charm.
Okay, on the item, recorded vote.
Counselor Layton, please. Counselor Wong-Tam. Counselor Layton, thank you. Counselor Wong-Tam, please. Counselor McMahon. The item carries. The vote is 25 to 4.
Our next item is on page 2, EX40...